I'd like to make a motion we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion we approve the minutes from the November sixth.
Questions, comments?
Aye.
Yeah.
Great to Mr. Bealy.
All right.
So I have Vic Benley here, who's the assistant hockey coach, Coach Connell's meeting with some other coaches and all the things tonight, but you have hopefully in your itinerary, your agenda, you have the itinerary of the trip. So we're looking for an overnight trip. We were able to schedule a game with Fulton and Windsor out by Syracuse and Biggumton area. And rather than go up one day, turn around and come back and then get back on the bus and drive up there again. The Booster Club was looking to have the teams stay overnight and then just go from the hotel, do a few things that if you look at the agenda, they're going to do some, some games and things like that the next day before the, before the game and stuff like that. And then leave and come back. So the trip will be basically fully funded by the Booster Club. They have the, the funds available to support the trip as far as meals and hotel and all those things. So they're pretty much funding the whole trip. And okay, any questions for that?
What you saying in Portland?
Yes.
A lot of places to stay then.
The, so we're the first of three. You can do this three times or?
Hopefully not. This, we're, we're the, we're the home district, so we have programs and they do like a, a rubber stamp. The only thing that's different really is from district to district is if there's anything specific as far as overnight trips with students though. So if, if Livonia or Avon have specific stuff that students need to go on an overnight trip, they might provide that. But basically you as a Board of Education approves the trip, they will both approve it as well.
How many from each district this year?
Right now, I believe it's nine from Livonia, eight from Avon and six from Geneseeo. And, and just so you know, when we do bring a Lakers, any of the teams initiatives to, before the board, the superintendents review it together and Craig reviews it with the ADs. So those, those steps do take place prior to this coming to you.
Yeah, the three ADs have talked and the three superintendents have talked. So everyone's seen this and everyone's on board with it. The approval there. Move forward.
Do it now? Okay. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the Lakers overnight trip on December twenty eighth to twenty ninth.
Any further questions, comments, thoughts? All right. So call in favor.
Aye.
Any votes? So move. Good luck. Good luck tomorrow night in Canada.
We're going to Canada with tomorrow. See what we have.
All right. Thank you so much.
So just wanted to provide an update on a couple of different things. Matt, you had sent the email about the New York State graduation measures. It was perfect timing. They had made the report public on Monday. And so some of these slides are actually directly from their PowerPoint. So this process actually started in twenty nineteen and it was that little thing called the pandemic that kind of put this on the back burner. But really what the purpose of this Blue Ribbon Committee was to look at alternates to the Regents' Diploma and could we make sure that all students are able to achieve what they have, what they need to graduate and be successful as citizens. So they had four priorities. They're really looking at multiple pathways leading to one diploma. They want to look at the assessment flexibility. You know, is the possibility of doing a project versus a test, understanding life-ready credentials, and then of course really incorporating culture responsive curriculum instruction and assessment into our graduation requirements. So they really started with a portrait of graduate, what they really want to see a student to be able to do and, and learn when they have graduated. And you can see a lot of what they've identified as a portrait of a graduate, I think is incorporated into our strategic plan. So I really am excited about implementing that. Looking at the cultural competence, you know, litter across the content areas, social emotional competence, effective communicator, global citizen and a critical thinker. So what are they really looking at? They're looking to replace, possibly replace the three diplomas with one diploma and then have option to add seals and endorsements. So if, if students, you know, accomplish and achieve at different levels, that can be indicated on their diploma. Really looking at the credit requirements and I know one of the priorities of, of this board and prior boards has been that financial literacy piece, and that is something that they're looking as making part of the diploma credit, credit, credit requirements. Looking at incorporating math and science as a STEAM credit and then of course our, our writing components. And something this board has also been very supportive, access to career and technical education, which in our region, we have great numbers of our students participating in our CTE courses. So again, reorganization of that credit, this is where they talked about combining maybe some of those math and science courses and it can be included in the STEM category. They do talk about fine arts a little bit later. We have, you know, commonly called ours the STEAM, so we incorporate that fine arts into this component. But they're really talking about incorporating math and science courses, so it could, could be considered that STEAM category. And really looking at diploma assessments to allow more options for different students. Maybe a performance-based assessment. We know that not all students can show their performances in, in a written test. So can there be some performance-based assessments that would allow us to award a student a blessing? Bobby's going, ah, finally. Options for specific students. I'm really excited about this slide because we do need to take into consideration that we have newcomer students. We have refugee students coming to our country. We do have students with significant cognitive disabilities. So are there different exemptions or different pathways for our students who may fall in one of those categories to earn a diploma? Teacher education. So they really want to look at that culture responsive sustaining education practices and pedagogy in all of the programs. And then annually, we are required to submit a professional development plan to New York State Education Department. Also having that have a component of the cultural responsive sustaining education practices and pedagogy included in that piece. So I really just wanted to show you where we are in that phase. So as I said, it started in two thousand nineteen, looking at these measures. November of two thousand twenty-three, they have given the feedback and kind of a summary of, of what they found in their report. From now until the spring, the Regents will really determine what will be the priorities and what will be the next steps. And then they're hoping to have phase four that rollout. So as, as information is provided and they are making decisions, I will continue to share updates with the Board of Education. Again, very preliminary steps. Before I go on, were there any questions or comments in regards to the Blue Ribbon?
So phase three, twenty twenty-three, two point three, point four, rollout of changes. Doesn't reflect the date. Would that be the fall of twenty-four curriculum moving forward, fall of twenty-four?
We don't know yet. So the Regents need to make those determinations. And once those Regents makes those, the Board of Regents makes those determinations, then they'll give us a date for rollout.
Will they provide a framework? Is that what they're going to do? And then we will then submit our curriculum for that. Compliance to it? How, how does this, how do we, how does it, how does each district adjust or modify?
Yeah. So this is, this is the first time that the Board of Regents has taken on initiative at this level, you know, of, of changing the Regents' Diploma, potentially not having Regents' exams, having performance-based. So it's hard to answer that question because I don't know if they know those answers. You know, whenever a regulation changes now, there, it's sent to all the superintendents in New York State and it's saying, these are the potential changes and then the Board of Regents adopts it and then we are given guidance on how to implement. So this is going to be a much more significant implementation and rollout. And so I, I honestly don't know how they're going to, I mean, it, it definitely will be driven from them. I'm anticipating our BOCs will be providing professional development for everyone, you know, superintendents, administrative team, teachers, to make sure that we're able to roll out these requirements and make sure that our students are, to graduate with all that is needed.
So I know other states are looking at, you know, like student A learns at a different rate than student B. And so, you know, right now, the, the current mechanism that's constant is time. And so I know New Hampshire is one of the states that's looking at flipping, you know, basically having, you know, you can comp out earlier and therefore utilize your time to pursue endeavors. Is that something along, are they looking at anything like that?
That's a great question. Not that I have seen, but we can certainly look into that and see if there are like flexibility with time requirements.
Questions? Sorry. I'd kind of like to ask a question to Allison. Is there?
Sorry about that.
That's like the first time Allison's really seeing this too.
But from, you know, the GFA's, you know, I mean, as the president, what do, what do you think this presents? I mean, the teachers' discussions, thoughts?
I don't, I haven't really heard a whole lot of discussion on it at this point. I think just really looking at it and reading a little bit about it myself. I think that it does open up some opportunities for some of our students who really do struggle with things the way they are. I am nervous about an open-ended performance assessment and how that's regulated. That makes me a little bit nervous. You know, personally as a upper-level math teacher, I want to send my kids off to college knowing that they have performed tasks that I need them to perform. And if I, if that's getting them ready for a test, I feel comfortable with that. If it's a project of some kind, that's a hard animal for me to create, to check all those boxes as well, to feel comfortable sending my kids off to school ready. But I think math would probably be something with a little less flexibility and that might be some more flexibility in some of the social sciences more, but you know, I think a lot of our teachers would welcome the idea of this and just need the training and the direction from the state as to how we're going to follow through. I mean, you know, we'll roll with whatever, whatever the state says to do and then we'll go from there. But I do welcome the idea of knowing, especially some of our kids who transferred in, who English isn't their first language, who are already behind in grade levels, to know that we can show progress and have them send them out into the world in a successful way, but not have to check the boxes that are not really reasonable for them to get through in the time that they're here.
And in the time when this implements, we'll have a, I mean, we're talking about graduation, but the lens will move to for beginning for elementary for us.
Right. I'm, I'm assuming that some sort of implementation will be in a cohort. You know, as they phase things out and phase things in, they will have those, those different plans.
I'm sure the Board of Regents will put all kinds of.
We'll read between those lines. You know, I, let me just, I guess, express one thought here just for you in the discussion when you're, when you're in the meetings. One of the things that, I hate to bring up Common Core, okay? And I apologize to anybody for bringing that up, but the, the, when, when that was implemented, one of the things that kind of I thought was odd was that if you're kindergarten, first grade, you've got a whole, you know, generation that won't get used to it. But if you're a senior in high school or a junior in high school, you're just kind of getting drawn at you after you've learned a different. So is there a, an implementation schedule, I guess, however this works? And I, I don't know enough about it to ask an intelligent question, but that was kind of one of my concerns.
So I have not seen an implementation schedule yet and so.
But I just felt there was those who were higher in high school that were struggling more than others in the Common Core.
But it's certainly something that we can, because throughout this process, the district superintendent, so Kevin McDonald will continue to go to Albany and take our feedback back and share that. Onto the capital improvement project. So work continues in the STEAM Gymnasium. In fact, some of the board members were able to see some of the updates. Mr. Holt went on a tour today. Was impressed with some of the work. And so we're still anticipating this work to be completed by the end of December. There was a question last time about the computer-based testing and do we have to do the testing? And so as you can see by spring, spring of two thousand twenty-six, they are expecting that all of our three through eight tests will be administered through computer-based testing. John, when did we start? We, because John was really far ahead of the computer-based testing. We've been testing our students on the computer a lot.
It was the first year that we could, they had field testing first that we wanted to get into. I'd have to look back to see exactly what it was, but I'm thinking eight to ten years and math was a bigger lift than ELA, obviously, but the vast majority of the assessment, you know, in, in math, it's either multiple choice or short answer types of things. So I think the kids adapted with it and they, and, and they learned you know, how to use those tools very well. And, and there were some issues technically, like when they first rolled it out statewide that everyone dealt with. But I, I think, I mean, even this year, when we had the PSATs, all of our students did it on, on a Chromebook. And there were some glitches from CollegeBoard.com, but the kids were patient and then it, it went through because I mean, that's definitely the push as far as where those assessment, including APs are going. So starting them off in three eight, I think is the way to go.
So the first year that we were able to use computer-based testing for Mr. Holt, he, he gets everyone ready and we, everyone logs in and the entire system in New York State crashes. And we thought it was just a Geneseeo. No, no, no. It was a New York State issue.
The first day was fine. It was, oh, this is easy. It was the second day. And everything was going to be perfect and it came to a screaming halt, that's for sure. Right, right.
And then also there were some questions in regards to the audit, in regards to what the word retainage means, and it's really in regards to our capital improvement project. We are paying six contractors for the current capital project work. And so basically we are keeping five percent of the construction costs just to ensure that the project is completed and done well. So that was what the retainage part of that audit was. And then the other piece was in regards to the TRS and ERS system, so the teacher retirement and employer retirement system. So we are required to fully fund the pension program in New York State and how that is determined is, you know, that TRS, ERS creates or tells school districts, this is going to be your percentage of increase for each school district. And this year it was underfunded, meaning that they didn't make as much money as they anticipated. So this has to be identified in our audit. And then as they're investing their money, we're hoping that they make that up. If not, this is one component that does need to our percentage increase as we move forward. So those were, those were great questions and thank you to Doug for, for providing those answers to us. I hope you had an opportunity last weekend to watch the drama production, The Boss Just Died, Can He Call You Back? It was hilarious. And kudos to the casting component of, of that play. They nailed it. Everybody that was in the, the role that they were in was, was absolutely perfect. And I just really want to congratulate the casting crew because it was hilarious and it just, you laughed out loud throughout the entire production. So kudos to, to those.
I had plans to, to ask Gianna if she wanted to be our SRO.
You know, when Officer Hopper's out, we now know for the bad offense, absolutely. Yeah. We'll have to remember that next time. We'll have to remember that. And this morning we got to start what I hope is a new tradition at Geneseeo. We haven't had in a really long time, since I can remember, new instructional spaces, completely renovated and opened up for our, our students. So we did have the instrumental music and the choral room. We did ribbon cutting ceremonies. There were students in the classrooms and we just talked about how excited we were as administration and a Board of Education to provide the students with these brand-new, perfectly looking, sounding, extra-space classrooms for our students. And so we had Chandra and Mr. Salatell do the, the ribbon cutting. I said, you know, it wasn't, I didn't say our eldest member of the fine arts. I said our most experienced and absolutely most accomplished person from our fine arts department. And so she was able to, to cut the ribbon and really open up those spaces. We will, when the gym and the STEAM space are completed, we will have a community night where we will do a more formal ribbon cutting process. And we will also have those rooms open for people to come and see. They'll also be able to see, you know, if they haven't been to concerts, but they'll be, be able to see the curtains that are going to be brand new. Because that's going to be the most visual component of the audit form that they'll be able to see. So excited to open up those spaces and the teachers were very excited about that as well. And just upcoming events, we've had our elementary teacher, parent teacher conferences were today and tomorrow, which then requires us to have our half-days. We do have our Thanksgiving break next week and I just want to wish everyone on the board and in the audience a happy Thanksgiving and I, I hope you're spending time with family and taking some much-needed time off from work. So happy Thanksgiving to all.
I, I echo that too from the Board's perspective. We certainly appreciate everything everybody's doing and that's our thing still.
Any questions on any component of the report?
Yeah. We didn't meet. We'll meet next.
Mike Dodd from. I gave us an update in regards to, we set some clarity, helped out everybody in the room in regards to how policies are developed, why we develop a policy in the structural level and then some basic questions as each policy is being reviewed. All right, just, you know, does it fit the criteria? Does it reinstate the law? If it does, we really should just follow the law. So it's good insight into moving forward as we hopefully try to, you know, finish up that policy book by year, ending our, our board year. See that completion. So we'd have a very good structured document moving forward. Thank you. Just a quick comment here. I know I mentioned it a couple of times, but I know Bobby and, and Matt are swapping. So Matt's going to finance and Bobby's going to policy. Kind of start a rotation in terms of training.
So GCF met last week and, you know, one of the things that the committee continues to ask themselves is as student needs and our district needs are changing, how can they provide more services and reach students? And so some of the ideas they had, and I'm going to reach out to both the mental health team and GFA, you know, does it make sense to do a coat drive? Does it make sense to do a boot drive? They, they're really looking to try and think creatively on how to support our students. You know, do they help facilitate some sort of backpack of food going back, going home over the February break? Because we talked around Thanksgiving and Christmas, our faculty does an amazing job of identifying the students who may need the help and then they, our faculty buys gifts, they buy food, and that is in conjunction with other organizations throughout the community as well. And then all that, all that the gifts and the food are then delivered to the families. So they said, you know, it seems like Thanksgiving and Christmas families are covered, but what happens in February and, and March and April? So trying to help support some of those other times of the school year that our students may be struggling with food insecurity or, or other stressors. So looking to just again, support our community in, in a different way. And I, I'm just so thankful, I know the faculty is for all that GCF does for our, our district, but the fact that they continually reflect on our practices helping our community, do we need to do something differently? You know, they, they joked their, their very first role was how to support and provide, you know, curriculum supplies and, and really support the teachers in that realm. And, and, and that's less of a need. It's certainly still something that teachers apply for grants, but you know, they're just recognizing that things are changing.
Motion to approve items eight point zero two through eight point one zero.
Any questions on that? This is related. Now, the, the first one is resignation, but it's really a resignation or reappointment from one role to another role. And then appointment of itself through. Additional volunteers and then some agreement with the GFA relative to, this is the language. Questions, any of that? Call in favor?
Make motion to approve items nine point zero two to nine point one one.
Any questions? Kevin, this is some of the second read on policies.
I'm assuming there's some type of mechanism in place about the tracking of the hours, assuming.
Yeah. So good. So what that is, that is really making sure that as we are utilizing that smart school funding for school safety, computers, cameras, not computers, cameras, that we are, we submit it correctly and get that reimbursement. And then what they're doing is they are ensuring that we don't have leftover funds in that area that we aren't utilizing.
This particular one was like assisting with the technical plan. There's a person that we're hiring to do so. So it's no more than twenty-four hundred dollars. And I've seen a lot of cases where like they just get twenty-four hundred, but is there going to be accounting? You know, that, that was my question. I was assuming that there would be.
Yeah. What I'm having difficulty with is there was a, an application for fifty thousand dollars put in and it was denied. And we don't have any, we don't know if we, we bought the wrong things according to the grant. We don't, there, there was a typing error in one of the things. We don't know if that held it up. So as we were meeting with a person that's, we were talking about cameras for the back of the school and trying to cost them out, they said, well, there's a, there's a guy in the area who's a retired administrator that's worked with all these districts. And he has the ability in this area, you know, to, to diagnose and to look and to help us. And there's three other projects that are I think they're at least sixty thousand dollars each. We have a hundred, we have two hundred thousand dollars to spend. So we want to make sure that we put the application in right, we get the reimbursement right, we figure out how we get this fifty thousand back or how that's changed around. And we don't have the expertise in-house to do that. So the twenty-four hundred dollars is going to be well worth it because we're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of benefit to the district.
Right. That was the grant funding.
So that's smart schools.
Any other questions? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? So you've already covered the, the old business. That was the financial. No executive session? Um, no executive session?
Move adjourned. Like it, it's a Thanksgiving miracle.
Happy Thanksgiving, so any, any questions and further questions or comments? Um, or anybody? Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Beal did tell me to keep it quick today, so.